I want to call this meeting to order and thank everybody for coming. And if you'll rise and stand for the invocation led by Commissioner Booker and the page of allegiance led by Commissioner Murphy.
Heavenly Father, we come before you with thanksgiving in our hearts, thanking you for this community, thanking you for all the blessings you bestowed upon us. Thanking you heavenly Father for keeping us safe from all the storms. Heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to bless and protect those families in Texas, the ones that have been hit in the Bahamas, heavenly Father. The help comes very fast for them. Also heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to bless and protect our first responders, those of our law enforcement that protect us day and night, also our military that's staying a post for us near and far. We ask all these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Page allegiance, we in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no other name, just as it is.
Please be seated. First order of business is public comment period, and we have one person signed up, Ms. Monica Smith, if you'll come up and state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'm Monica Smith, and I live on St. Simon's Island. I'm here tonight. I wanted to be here two weeks ago when, on your agenda, you had a proposal for the sheriff's department to buy some pursuit vehicles. Unfortunately, that meeting was interrupted by the non-hurricane, and subsequently to that, you had a special call meeting at which citizen comment is not permitted. So I wasn't able to comment on the purchase of those vehicles, although I appreciate that the sheriff did specify in his request to you that he was ambivalent about whether they should be pursuit vehicles or just plain old patrol vehicles, but he was going with the state contract because it was on the state contract. I just want to point out that we're getting, to deliver warrants, the sheriff is getting pursuit vehicles that get 13 miles to the gallon when they're driving around the city, which hardly seems efficient, and in addition to that, the Dodge Chargers are manufactured in Canada, so we don't even get that benefit. In any case, tonight, I'm here to talk to you about, and I have distributed to you a summary of the grand jury report with its recommendations, as well as some recommendations from the IACP report. I'm assuming that the commission has not reviewed the report from the grand jury, because the affidavit I received about your closed meeting was that it was about personnel matters, and you were not reviewing the report from the grand jury. So I'm sort of ahead of the curve on that matter. I would just like to notice that of the 18 recommendations made by the grand jury, 11 of them address failures on the part of the county commission to provide adequate direction and supervision for the Glen County Police Department, and I hope that will be addressed and corrected in a workshop setting soon. I do not agree with the conclusion of the grand jury that if you don't make any changes, that the police department should just be transferred to somebody else, because, as we know in the past from the joint water and sewer, that that really did not affect the quality of the performance of this commission. It just relieved you of some responsibilities. I was pleased to see that you had a workshop on the IACP report, which was prepared for you a year ago. However, it didn't cover all the things that I would have wanted to see covered. I would point out to you that I was impressed by the 2017 report telling me that there had been 159 accidents in the year that the police officers were involved in, and so I wanted to know whether or not we'd had any improvement. Asking for that data, which supposedly came from the CAD, that is, the Computer Assisted Dispatch Program, I was not provided just a number, which is what I was looking for. I was actually provided 25 reports of accidents that the officers had been involved in, including one where the entire vehicle went up in flames because the officer didn't know enough to turn off the engine when he was stuck in grass. So we obviously need a bit of improvement as far as our operation of motor vehicles is concerned. Both the grand jury and the IACP made important points about accurate record-keeping and the fact that although the CAD program is in place, the data does not seem to be entered in a regular basis. For example, the IACP recommended that every contact between a police officer and a citizen should be recorded and logged in the C I D in order for the police department to get an idea of what the community concerns were. It was also recommended, and you will see those in the five or six recommendations at the bottom of that page, that there be a citizens advisory board set up to interact with the police department and vet some of their programs and activities, and I strongly recommend that. I haven't heard anything about such being considered by the chief or by anyone else, and I certainly, I have talked to people in the community, and they all think it's a very good idea, so I hope they'll take that into serious consideration, and we can hear about such a body being set up, so I don't have to come up here and natter at you in person. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to add item 10 to the agenda to conserve approval of a Glen County EDA development revolving loan in the amount of $57,000, $50 to Odell Frosty and the loan documents. The loan agreement, security agreement, promise earned of deed secured.
Second. Commissioners, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify or raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. We will add item 10 to the agenda. Okay, commission presentations and announcement. John, if you and your crew could come on up, and if y'all have plaques and bring them up, we're probably gonna get a photo when I get done here. Yeah, why the... Oh, y'all can work yourselves on over this way if you will. While we're getting them over here, we are recognizing the Glen County G I S department for winning the prestigious G M I S G2 government, that's the G2G award for the unmanned aircraft system. I know our department and our employees have a wealth of experience and knowledge with the unmanned aircraft, and they've done some very unique things with them, and must be because they've been recognized for it, and we just want to say thank you here in public and let these fine men get recognized. John, you got anything you want to... Bob? Bob Niers?
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I just wanted to introduce Andrew and Michael. Andrew Strickland, Michael Mazzich, they're two of our FAA certified pilots. Johnson Teno is our third pilot, he and our official manager. Lord mentioned about the Jesus of the Lord, a little bit about Jesus, their international organization, and that they are just an international organization of executive technology leaders in the United States. We're very honored to receive this for you. You've done all kinds of, throughout the process, you know, everything from, I think, can't be, it can't be the, to help of that, you know, to finding the, the, the.
Especially with the marsh we have around here, a lot of them go out to the marsh. People fly right over and find them.
Anyway, we've done a lot of work and along those lines, and we created a, there you go.
You got it up there? Okay, I think upstairs has it. Can you play it?
That's at the Public Safety Building.
It was a great turnout.
This is a train derailment at Buffalo Beach that happened last spring, and they wanted an assessment of how many cars had disrailed and what the damage was, and sending in drones is the perfect thing to do.
Yeah.
Safe and quick.
Looked kind of in the center of the screen there.
Can't hide.
And the drones got him, so they're guiding him by radio over to him. And that shows a traffic pattern for that intersection, which was provided to traffic engineers.
Just want, I'd just like to say a couple of things about these guys, Johnson Teno also. They really, they took this, we started this program about four years ago, and they've done some miraculous things with this, with this drone. And we've worked with a lot of different departments in Glen County. We are working with other organizations outside of Glen County, or outside of Glen County. We're working with Fletsey. We've worked with the Department of Natural Resources, among others. They've done a great job, and another thing I want to say is that you all have been very supportive of us, and we've come a long way in just a short, short period of time.
Yeah, I would certainly agree with that, and, you know, you took two things here that stand out, is the quality of your work and working with all the different people. It really takes a partnership to keep us all going in the right direction, and y'all do a great job of that. We thank you. Commissioners, y'all have anything you want to...
Where do you typically fly the, where are you located when you're flying these things typically?
Andrew?
We're supposed to keep the drone in line of sight. We're not supposed to let it get where we can't physically see it with our eyes.
So you're in the field out there, you're not in a bunker somewhere.
Right, no, no. Right.
Where'd you guys get your training?
Actually, to fly the drone, you have to have what the FAA calls Part 107 certified, and so it's just, it's a written test that you have to take at a training center, and so we went and passed the test. There's actually not much training out there for physically flying it, they just want you to have the knowledge of airports and airspace and stuff like that.
One thing you were very careful about when we started the drone program is that we wanted to be FAA approved. We got our certificate of authorization before we started flying from the FAA, so we had all our ducks in the road before we did any work with the drone.
Right.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. We are so proud of you. Public hearing, alcoholic beverage license. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position, and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position at the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Item two, consider the issuance of a 2019 alcoholic beverage license to Ronald Roberts for Sea Island Acquisition LLC, DBA, Sea Strike Bowling Alley and Restaurant, 400 Beach Club Drive, Sea Island, Georgia. The license is to sell distilled spirits, malt beverages, and wines for consumption on premises of a restaurant. Sunday sales permitted for restaurant. Ronald Roberts licensee.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Roberts' application is in compliance with all regulations that are ordinance, and he's here if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Captain. This is a public hearing. We will take those in favor first. Step up to the mic. Okay. We'll take those that are opposed. If you'll step up to the mic and state your name.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith. I'm not actually opposed to this, but I didn't want to take up space that might be used by others to talk about this. Like Justice Kavanaugh, I like to drink beer, and I'm a little sad that this application is for consumption in the restaurant only, and I cannot wander in from the beach when I take my long walks down to check on the spit, and I pass this club, which I can't go into anyway. It's just too bad they're not going to sell stuff out on the beach to passing, wandering citizens. But the reason I wanted to speak to you on this tonight is that this map is so very careful that although there are residential zoning districts closer than 600 feet to this proposed site for alcohol sales, and although there is a church, I'm sorry, a chapel within 600 feet, for the first time, I'm noticing, on an application, for the first time, I'm noticing that walking distance is given. I haven't seen this on other applications, and if I'm wrong, if you all have been doing this consistently, then I apologize. Anyway, the last time you had a hearing on an alcohol application, you turned it down because there were several churches nearby that were even closer or further than these are here. So walking distance, I appreciate the accommodation you're doing to the Sea Island applicant to distinguish between distance and walking distance, and I'm surprised you didn't have driving distance as well. So I appreciate the great care you give to make sure that Sea Island gets what it wants. So, thank you.
I think I'm gonna wade in, maybe I shouldn't, but I think the, I think the walking distance first came up when we did the airport liquors that moved over to retreat, and I think that's when we kind of got away from measuring line of sight to, is that not right, Mr. Attorney, which has been a couple of years maybe?
That's, we've, this is a restaurant exemption, and we've had that on the books for quite a while. The one you're referring to, Mr. Chairman, is the one that refers to liquor stores and natural and physical barriers between the point A and point B. What I'm not positive, the chapel's not a church, from what I understand. That's correct. So I don't think we have an issue with what is labeled as that chapel here tonight. So it would not implicate the distance requirements or distance issues between the restaurant and the chapel.
Just to put Mr. Smith's mind at ease, when we approved the porch restaurant there on Ocean, we use walking distance also, sir. I remember that specifically. So without further ado, I make a motion that we approve the issuance of said license. Did I jump the gun again?
If there's anyone else that's opposed and wants to speak, and you don't have to be opposed in the same manner as Mr. Smith is, you can be opposed in whatever manner you want to be. But if there's no one else, we're gonna close out the public comment period. All right, Commissioners, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the issuance of said license for Sea Island Acquisition, Sea Strike Bowling Alley and Restaurant.
Second. Commissioner, we have a motion, second on the floor. Any further discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify or raise your right hand. Thank you all. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve consent agenda, general business, with the exception of any item that a commissioner would like to pull for discussion or to defer.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item eight because it's already been granted, so we can just pull it to eliminate if it's not needed.
Okay, we have a motion to pull, to approve all items, consent agenda, except for item eight. Do we have a second? We have a second. All those, any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, signify or raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Commissioner Booker, if you would restate your reason for, for the record, for pulling item eight.
From my understanding, EPA has already granted the extension of the public comment period. They actually announced it at the public meeting they had last week, that they were going to do that.
And the attorney has confirmed that?
Correct.
Okay, we have that letter. Thank you. General business, item nine. Ms. Thompson was supposed to present that tonight, Commissioners, and she is not here. I think she is, I think she's under the weather, so can I get a motion to do something?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we defer this item until our October meeting.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? I call the motion. All those in favor deferring, signify or raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item 10. Item 10, consider approval of a Glen County Economic Development revolving loan in the amount of $57,050 to O. Del Rosby and the loan documents consisting of the loan agreement, security agreement, promissory note, and deed to secure debt. And who is, is that Reese doing the presentation on that?
But I am aware of the loan. It will be a loan to enable him to make renovations to the restaurant there at the corner of, I believe it's G. and Martin Luther King Boulevard, in the amount of $57,000. It'll be secured by a first mortgage on the building and on all of the equipment. So if there's a default, you can foreclose and take the building and all the equipment.
Okay, so Commissioners, do y'all have any questions of Mr. Summifer? Anybody want to make a motion?
I move that we accept the motion as presented.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Reese. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
For, that would be for pending litigation purposes. And also, before we get to that, as a matter of house cleaning, can we just, as a formality, remove number eight from the agenda, just so it's clear that that was removed?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to remove item number eight from the agenda. Permanently remove it.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Okay, can we have a motion now to go into executive session?
For pending litigation, please.
For pending litigation.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I make a motion that we go into executive session for pending litigation.
Good. Motion second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. We are adjourned for executive session. We will be back.
So, motion second.
Got a motion second. All those in favor of signal five by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. There is no other action to be taken, so this meeting is adjourned.